Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen's Meeting of October 1st, 2019. Will you rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve an expense warrant and a payroll warrant. Uh, the expense warrant is for 9/24/19 for $365,464.85. And the payroll warrant from 9/25/19 for $173,362... I mean, $163,362.95.
You have that motion?
Second.
It's printed.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would like to approve two sets of selectmen's minutes from 9/18/19.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would like to acknowledge, uh, minutes and reports from other departments. We have a conservation commission minutes from 7/16/19, CIPC minutes from 8/13/19, grant rights report from September 29th, 2019, EMS report from September 2019, and the fire department report from 2019.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then we have some anniversaries with the EMS. We have Dan Driscoll, he's been on for 10 years, fire department anniversaries, Luke Quadraselli for two years, and Michael Laird for two years. I'd like to congratulate them all and tell them that we appreciate all the services that they do for the town and hope that they continue to do these for many more years yet. Okay, now we have announcements. A reminder, the Brookfield Apple Country Fair will be held from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM Saturday, October 12th, Rainer Schein. The annual features live entertainment over 75 vendors, food trucks, and raffles, including the famous apple raffle, children's games, et cetera. Judging for the apple pie contest will take place at 10:00 AM. Pies must be dropped off at the fire station before 10:00 AM. First, and second, and third winners will be awarded in the following categories: up to 12 years old, 13 through 19 years of age, and adults. Pies must be a classic two-trust apple pie in a disposable pan. Trick or treat in the common and village areas will be held from 6:00 to 7:30 PM Thursday, October 31st, immediately followed by a parade from the fire department to the town common. A costume contest will follow. Does anyone else have any announcements to make?
That's good.
Okay, we'll start off with our first one on our agenda. First one on our agenda is our town accountant with financial updates.
So, at the last meeting, I said I would be back on the first to give you an update on where we stood for our closing of fiscal year 18 and the status of 19 and 20. Um, unfortunately, we are, um, we've hit a problem with our fiscal year 18 closing. Um, we have been working with the Department of Revenue in trying to reconcile a $1.4 million discrepancy in the closing of your fiscal year 17 books. Um, from what was reported on Gateway to what is in your current, um, VEDAR general ledger. Um, there is a discrepancy and it is an unknown discrepancy. Um, according to the Department of Revenue, um, and from what we have seen, because we have worked, um, at the tail end of the consultant that you had used before, um, they have seen this before. They are willing to let us do, uh, what they call just adjusting entry, um, to correct the cash as long as we are not in suspicion of fraud. It doesn't appear that there has been fraudulent activity. Um, based on the information that we have from the cashbook, whether or not it was municipal cashbook or not that was prepared by George Hunt, it does appear that in total at the close of fiscal year 18, there is the correct amount of cash in the bank. Um, so we are gonna go ahead and prepare an adjusting entry. In order to do an adjusting entry to the general ledger cash, we do have to look at a number of things, one of them being withholdings. Um, your withholdings were improperly reported in fiscal year 17. Um, they were given a fund number, um, on your balance sheet, which doesn't exist in your ledger. Um, so we have to determine where that dollar amount came from and how to include it in our adjustment for fiscal year 18 to get the beginning balance to be correct.
Can you take us through that piece one more time, just for Claire to see?
Sure. So typically, when you withhold payroll, um, taxes, any liabilities, what would happen is the treasurer would put the all liabilities onto a warrant, so they would go out to be paid, whether or not they're being directly paid by Harper's, which is your payroll service, or whether the treasurer is actually cutting the company a check, which would be like health, dental, life insurance. Um, and then, on the other side, the receipt as a turnover comes in. So most of the accounts, like federal, state, they become just wash accounts, as we call them. So there's never a balance sitting in any of those accounts. Um, but then for like your health insurance, you have the portion that the town pays, the portion the employee pays, so you can see each account zeroing out at the end of the year. Um, that has never happened here. Um, for fiscal year 17, fiscal year 18, and fiscal year 19, none of your state, federal, or basically any of your withholdings, with the exception of your health, dental, and life, were ever reported in the general ledger. So when your prior accountant closed the books in fiscal year 17, and any accountant when they closed the books, they have to account for any withholdings that are still outstanding. So they somehow chose a number, and it was somewhere around $100,000, I believe it was like $95,000, and said that this fund had $95,000 in liabilities to be paid in fiscal year 18, which is a normal thing that happens. You usually have some bills that still have to be paid the first month of the following year. Um, but we can't account for where those bills are coming from because he chose Fund 990, which doesn't belong to your town. Um, it doesn't exist. And obviously, he chose that because there was no withholdings ever being withheld and reported. I mean, you're withholding, you're paying your bills, obviously Harper's is taking care of that for you, but they're not being properly done.
So when it came back to the town, it wasn't getting recorded appropriately?
Exactly.
Okay, so the checks were going out?
Everything's being paid, yep.
Everything's been paid?
Yep.
It's just a case of the traceability on those?
Exactly. Um, so we have made the decision, we, because it would be an incredible amount of work to try to go back through all of fiscal year 18 and 19, to try to go through every single payroll, put all of the withholdings into the system twice, basically, on a warrant, and then into the treasurer's receipts. We are going to leave them as non-existent into the general ledger, and we are gonna start the process in fiscal year 20.
Is it appropriate? Is it gonna start in fiscal year 20, the fiscal year that we're in?
Yes.
So we're gonna be going back and doing the withholding work for anything up to this point?
We're gonna start as of July 1st this year.
So, so what it sounds like is we had a practice of off-balance-sheet accounting?
Yes.
And, and what you're saying is we need to be on balance sheets?
Yes, everything has to be on the balance sheet.
Understood.
Yes.
So, so with this, um, we do have a financial policy doc- uh, document?
Yes.
And so are we going to be updating that to catch these kinds of things?
Yep, so it has actually just gotten to me two days ago. Um, so it is my turn, so I'm going to start with my edits, and I have a lot to add.
That's fine.
And then I'll return it. I'm the last one, so then I'll be returning it to you.
Excellent.
Um, so the withholdings is a big part of it. Um, we're gonna end up with a $1.4 million adjusting entry. What the adjusting entry does is it just brings our cash up to where it belongs, um, and what it says it should be at the close of fiscal year 17. And then when we do an actual audit, um, with an outside auditing firm, they will determine if the adjusting entry was...
How accurate it was?
Exactly, correct.
So we get to the $64,000 question of the audit and the timing of the audit?
So as soon as we close fiscal year 18 and 19, um, we would like to have an audit done.
And what's that expected time?
So we are, our original goal obviously was yesterday to have fiscal year 18 Schedule A. And we are still hoping that we're not too far off. My new goal is the end of this month to have fiscal year 18 in. Um, fiscal year 19, I'm still gonna keep my original goal of the end of the year. Um, we haven't gotten too far behind. So with that being said, as soon as everything is submitted and the Department of Revenue comes back with their follow-up questions on both, because there will be, um, we'd like to get the audit scheduled. So hopefully February or March, at the very latest.
Excellent.
Eric was gonna speak to, um, Tom Scanlon and see if he would be interested in coming back out to do a five-year audit.
I hope he, I hope he will because he's very, they're very good, because we've used him before.
He was, um, helpful. We did speak to him, um, regarding all of this to see, just to get some feedback. Um, so he was helpful in providing some feedback. So that is where we stand right now.
Just, just one, uh, small question. The, this audit, is that any different than what we've already budgeted for this fiscal year? Or is that, because I know there was a line item we had for, I think, five expenses. So I don't know that it's gonna be greater or less than that.
So the amount budgeted, I don't have the budget with me right now. Yeah, so that's probably a price for about a year's audit. Um, a one-year audit would generally run anywhere between 12 and 17,000. So we're probably looking at more. So it may become something that needs to be tapped into the reserve fund for. So, eh, or looking at other options. Steve?
How does this affect, or do you even know, balances like stabilization?
So I did a stabilization analysis, and the figure, um, that was on the information that you provided me, and I think it was a balance of somewhere in the neighborhood of like 600,000, once you took out town meeting. Um, the stabilization balance that I currently have is $360,000. So there is a discrepancy in the general ledger, um, that has been there since fiscal year 17, that's showing more in stabilization than there actually is. Um, when you remove that, deduct out the fiscal year 18 and 19 town meetings, add back in the money that was put in in fiscal year 19, and then deduct out what was just spent in fiscal year 20, it brings you down to about $360,000.
You're saying a discrepancy in the stabilization starting point goes all the way back to 2017?
Yes. There was an entry put in fiscal year 17, adding $128,000 to stabilization, but there's no record of that.
What was the timing of the entry for the 128?
Um, I believe it was November of, oh, I should have a little bit more. It was posted six times in and out, making a correction. Um, it, it looks like she attempted to do it 7/116, and then 11/1516 are the dates on the entries. But it went in and out six times and then stayed in. But I couldn't find any record of that amount.
This 128,000 in and out?
Six times, and then stayed in.
And then stayed in?
Yes. But that dollar amount that's sitting in stabilization right now doesn't match what was reported on your balance sheet. And the amount that was reported on the balance sheet is what we're showing is a true amount, um, that does actually belong in stabilization, which was 511,134, which should have been there at the close of fiscal year 17. And the dollar amount I'm coming up with, um, matches to what is showing up in Bartholomew, which is, um, the company that oversees, the bank that oversees your stabilization account.
The 511 is what was showing in VEDAR, but the 360 is what's sitting in Bartholomew?
Nope, so the 511 is what was shown on the balance sheet at the end of fiscal year 17. At the end of fiscal year 17 in VEDAR is showing that you had 697,000, which is not right.
697?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but I thought you just said that we only had 360.
Right. Because you had to add in, you had to take out the fiscal year 18 votes, the fiscal year 19 votes, and then add back in money that you designated in fiscal year 19 as well, and then deduct out the fiscal year 20 votes. And that's what brought down to 360.
Laurie, are you saying that none of those votes have gone through stabilization at this point?
Um, in Bartholomew, I'm showing that we have done up through the fiscal year 19 special town meeting. The only things not done were the, just the June, which would be the 19, second 19 special town meeting, and the 20 annual, which would be correct because I have not given the treasurer those votes to move yet. In the ledger, um, not, these are not posted.
So back, back to, to recap. So we're 17, I'm sorry, 18, end of this month?
Hopefully, yes.
19, end of the year?
Yep.
Audit soon after?
Yes, as soon as we are able to schedule it. If we're, if we get everything back as quick as I'm hoping, um, we could schedule one as soon as January. Um, realistically, we don't have to wait for the DOR questions. As soon as we get things submitted, um, we could just go ahead and schedule the audit.
Soon or the better?
Yeah, sooner the better.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because they do, they have, because they had only did part of fiscal 14, and yeah, they have all the rest of them to do.
Right.
So they'll probably be here quite a while and...
It, for five years, it would probably take about a month, um, if not a little bit longer of not being here the entire time, but being on and off-site.
Peter?
Yes.
Is the implication of this, uh, development of free cash that free cash will be huge that the money is not being transferred, uh, from, from available resources into stabilization as we thought?
No, because I'm gonna correct all of these before those go in. Um, so 18 is still open, um, 19 is still open. So by the time that these, the balance sheets, well, it's really only gonna be the 19 balance sheet, um, by the time the 19 balance sheet goes in, all of the corrections will have been made. So the stabilization account will be at the proper amount in the ledger, and all of the correct transfers will have been made. So I'm backdating all of the transfers to the way they should be.
At some point, can you send out a summary of what you have for that back, actual balance starting in 17, and then the major votes?
I can make you a copy of this, yes.
And the votes in and out at the town meeting?
Yep.
Because I just wanna go back through and double-check that we have everything allocated to the right votes as well. That number seems, 251K out of stabilization not replaced doesn't sound right based on, on some of the votes back in.
You put 261 back in, um, at the 19 town meeting.
Right.
But the 19, you had two specials in 19, one in the fall, and then one just in June. And then you had a 20 annual, and none of that money has gone back.
Okay.
Now, another question is I have to ask, uh, how we had the, how we had the deficit in the, um, general insurance and our insurance? Now, well, has that been taken care of? Now that'll come out of free cash, won't it?
That will come against the free cash.
Okay.
Yes. So you can, you can handle it two ways. You can put it on the balance sheet and have it deducted off the free cash, or we can put it on the recap, um, and have it affects the, affect the tax rate if there's room, um, which we are not at that point yet, so we wouldn't know.
So again, getting back to the on-balance-sheet versus off-balance-sheet.
Mm-hmm.
It suggests that we've been off-balance-sheet for a lot, a lot of these accounts.
Yes.
And so putting things on-balance-sheet is, is the, is your action moving forward?
Yes, mm, yes.
This is a question I'm still, I guess going forward, do we have any estimate based on your work as far as what free cash might be? Are you close enough to figure out?
No, not yet. I'm still, um, I was hoping to have some numbers into the recap to work on page two. Um, so page two, you enter in, um, overlay information, um, not on page two, but you enter in overlay is part of what I do for the recap. And then on page two, I put in 19 actual revenues, and then I put in 20 estimated revenues. Um, I worked last week with the assessor, and we attempted to balance 18 and 19 overlay, which he explained to me had never been done with the accountant. Um, so we made good progress. Um, we found a few issues, only two unposted, um, abatements, which the abatements are what make up the overlay number. Um, so I'm gonna post those today. Um, it took a little longer than we had initially hoped. Um, after municipal modernization came into effect, overlay was asked to have been combined into one account. Um, that never happened here, and it's, it's been in effect for two or three years now. Um, so I have had to manually add every account you have, and you have 20 years, 11 years' worth of accounts. So that, in fiscal year 20, all of your overlays will be combined, and it'll be done properly. Um, so we are working on balancing the overlay, um, close to what he's been using, um, not too far off. Um, the problem I'm having now is to, in order to do page two, like I said, I need 20 estimates, which I have. Um, however, I don't have, uh, proper 19 revenues because we are still missing revenues, um, out of the treasurer's office. So until they get those entered, I can't do anything.
Was that the treasurer receipt posted when we were talking?
Yes. Yep, so those, until those are fully entered, I cannot enter page two.
Is there, is there a, has that been discussed with everyone?
Is there a commitment?
Is there a timeline commitment?
Timeline.
Time.
I don't know. I, I've mentioned it, and I, they're working on 18 and 19, and I'm just waiting at this point. I do know that we are up against a timeline to get the recap in, um, because they're hoping to start working on the, the software conversion in the assessor's office. Um, I believe at the end of, somewhere at the end of October, the beginning of November, so I think is what the assessor told me. And our goal was to get the recap in and done prior to them starting the software conversion.
We finished working on receipts today, warrants today, approved, um, with Laurie. She doesn't know yet because she was gone, and we finished tonight at 5:00, um, FY18. Um, the only discrepancy we have is the beginning cash for FY18, so we'll know where the ending cash should be in that, is what we will discuss on Thursday. So our, our receipts and warrants right now are improved for FY18. So we're, we're close, very close. But I mean, we've got, pulling boxes out for 17, and we have found, we've found many entries in the boxes that have nev, were never put on the system at all. So that's what we did today, and she just has to receive them, so.
Thank you, sweetie. And you are treasurer?
I'm, I'm...
Assistant treasurer?
Yes, assisting treasurer, yes.
It's going okay?
Very well.
Is the timeline and all working for you?
Yeah, it's a lot of work to go through, because you gotta go through page after page, boxes that are opening top there, and pull down a box. And as I said today, we found seven entries just by going through this one section of all 2018, and had never, I don't know, they were just put in a box. So we had to input and put them in the system, and now Laurie will have to have them, so. But we're right there, so.
Just, just one other question. Do you have the staffing you need to get this done, or any more people, or?
You asking me?
Well, I was, you know, I'm sorry, I don't, you're...
He's asking your opinion so that we can...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was...
That's okay.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, well, yes, we have the staffing. It's, it's a room, it's the size of the room that's the problem. You know, it's trying to wa, you know, get stuff out front and lay it all out, so, yeah. We're working well at it, thank you.
Just a, a question. Would it be, would it expedite anything if you put a freeze on certain things? Or you wouldn't be doing issues, trying to catch up to flash?
I, I can't, personally, we can't freeze anything because as it is, um, we're working on 18 and 19, and nothing for 20 has been started in any department other than the accountant department. And we're in October now, so we are already three months behind. So currently, we're looking at the same poor situation that we've already been in, ahead right now, which is not at all where we should be.
So the same question to you, Laurie, do we have the staffing that we need to catch up?
Um, I'm perf, yes. In the accounting side, I'm perfectly fine. I am currently waiting on, um, just other departments. But yes, so the perk of having a regional accountant is I have two other people working with me, um, just not here. So I have someone else writing that adjusting entry for me because she's done it, um, in two other towns, working behind that same consultant that did your fiscal year 17 balance sheet. Um, he prepared Goshen and Oxbridge and did them the exact same way, and they had the same problem. And she was our acting accountant in those two towns, and she had to do the same thing. So she knows exactly how to write out the entry, um, exactly the way the Department of Revenue wants it. So I gave her all the information, and she's writing the entry for me on Thursday. So in that sense, it's like you get a whole team of accountants, but you only ever see me.
So are any of your resources devoted to fiscal year 20, 2020?
I am...
So we're not three months behind?
I am not three months behind. So your warrants, for, right now for fiscal year 20, your warrants are current, your receipts, everything I've received for fiscal year 20 are posted. The only thing that has not been done on my side for fiscal year 20 is your receivables. Um, your receivables, I have just finished 18. I am halfway through 19, um, but I have done both sides. So typically, the way receivables work is the tax collector does one side, the accountant does the other, and you balance in together monthly, the same way you would do the treasurer's side with cash. I did both sides for 18 and 19 to quickly catch us up because receivables have also never been done here. Um, I am three months behind in fiscal year 20 because I have not finished fiscal year 19. As soon as I get an ending balance for 19, I'm gonna teach the tax collector how to do this. The tax collector's side is a lot easier to do than the accountant's side, so I don't think that I'll have any issues showing Brenda how to do it. Um, and receivables are pretty easy to catch up with. Um, so I would expect within a month, we'll have caught up on receivables. So on the accountant's side, you're caught up on 20. Um, everyone has been paid, your warrants are to date. You have a lot of scanning that needs to be caught up with, but that's beside scanning.
Receivables have never been posted?
Um, so they have been posted, they have to be posted. That's how the tax collector accepts her payments. They have never been balanced between the tax collector and the accountants.
Okay.
So last year, or the last fiscal year that you closed, so 17, what they did in order to close the books, because you have to report your receivables in Gateway, all they did was... all they did was take the tax collector balances out of her side of VEDAR, and they used those as the end of year balances. And they put those on the collector's side and the accountant's side, and didn't report any variances.
Your document for policy and procedures will be updated.
Yes.
Adjusting the practice that is acceptable.
Yes, so the DLS, part of the Department of Revenue, the Department of Local Services, has suggested policies on balancing between the treasurer, balancing between the collector, and we basically use those with a little extra wording. So I'm gonna reformat them to include those policies.
So as soon as that is probably all done, we'll probably have a meeting, and we'll get together and go over the whole policy book.
I'm ready.
Yeah, we're ready. Peter?
Problem for you, do you, outside? You're right, but you're supposed to be checking your balance.
So it's, it's not ideal to do both sides. It, as long as it is noted on the Gateway submittal, and as long as I am upfront with the auditor and let him know that I did both sides, then it's perfectly fine. I got all of my information from the tax collector out of her side of VEDAR. I have access to that side of VEDAR as read-only, so I can't manipulate or touch any of the data on the tax collector's side. I can't change payments, anything like that. All I'm doing is entering her data into a spreadsheet to see if we balance out. So I will note that I completed her balances. She will have to review them at the end, for the end of eighteen and the end of nineteen, and she'll have to sign off on her own balances on Gateway. But we'll let the auditor know that I prepared the spreadsheet.
Is there a significant difference between what you have concluded were the receivables and what was reported?
For fiscal year, the end of fiscal year seventeen to the beginning of fiscal year eighteen, I had to make adjustments already to the general ledger side because what was reported on the accountant's side was not actually what was there. It was the tax collector balances. So we adjusted our balances. We adjusted them down, I believe. I don't have the papers with me, but I believe we adjusted ours down to match hers. I don't know why they didn't match. Unless we go back and audit fiscal year seventeen ourselves, we wouldn't know why.
Will that be revealed?
Through an actual audit, yes. We removed things off the system that should have been removed multiple years ago. You had farm animal excise still on the system that is uncollectible. You had property tax deferral that was paid in two thousand and six, and we had the note paid. There were multiple things reported that just were never paid. Just not never paid, but never removed. So that's all been cleaned up, so everything looks a lot cleaner now.
So you get some stuff that went all the way back to two thousand and six that you're cleaning up?
You have stuff that goes back to the mid-nineties that we're cleaning up.
So I just, I wanted to establish that with the questions, because there's, there's.
Yes.
Frequently, there seems to be a feeling that these issues started recently.
No.
And fundamentally, we've got a long history of this kind of dysfunction specifically between, I think, the balancing in the departments and the reconciliation between treasurer and accountant, assessor and accountant. And so I just, thank you for clarifying.
Oh, these go back a while, yes.
Thank you for asking that. I just, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
So, so when should we have this conversation?
Probably, I'd say, after Laurie probably gets FY eighteen and submits that to the state.
Back to November first, or?
Yeah, probably, yeah, probably about November first.
So this is an agenda item for Honor of November first. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Oh, wait a minute.
We just had, leave us with a special fall town meeting needed for voting. Are we ready to do that, or not ready, will we be ready?
If there's no, if there isn't any money, we don't have any free cash. We can't do anything financially.
And specifically, if, if stable, and like I said, I'd like to see the inputs on stabilization.
I can make you a copy before I leave tonight, yeah.
Is that, I think we may have to reassess the plan on the Going After the Park grant, just because there really wouldn't be a responsible funding mechanism.
I, I had talked to Kathy about that today.
Another conclusion?
And she said, well, the way she explained it to me, and Laurie can probably pick up on it better, we wouldn't, if we do take, this money has to come out of, I got it written down here. She said we would have to take a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars out of stabilization. But she, but it's like only a figure if we get the grant. Just, we have to take that out, but it's really just on paper, right, Laurie? And then if we do get the grant, we will get, we'd get eighty-three thousand, seven hundred thousand out for the grant, and then we would only have to come up with thirty-five hundred and eight, eight hundred thousand.
Thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand, I mean, I'm sorry. And she said, that will, that's all the town would have to pay. And then she said that it's not payable until fiscal twenty-one.
So it's the same as the, it's the same as the vote we did for the school at the annual town meeting, the MSBA grant, where we voted two million dollars for their grant, and our portion was only six thousand or sixty thousand, whatever it was. We would essentially have to vote to move from stabilization, the hundred and nineteen thousand, you have to move the full award amount. It's not a payable amount until fiscal year twenty-one. So if you so choose, because it's an eighty percent or sixty percent reimbursable grant, so you get the thirty-five thousand is all we have to pay. At the fiscal year twenty-one annual town meeting, you could vote to rescind the stabilization vote for that and vote to reappropriate transfer funds from free cash for the hundred and nineteen thousand, because you still need to continue the full vote amount. And then you're actually only gonna pay the thirty-five thousand dollars. But there's actually no money movement in fiscal year twenty.
Right, so would necessarily, so would necessarily be irresponsible to take it to a town meeting vote if long-term that's part of the town's plan?
So it would be, what is Kathy saying as far as our situation with the grant? Are we, are we in good shape, or?
Well, she, she said she really doesn't, she doesn't, it's all been submitted.
Okay, so, so we can't. So we need to continue this discussion?
We have to continue this.
Because we would not want to give up seventy thousand or eighty thousand dollars.
Because she said that she would have to let them know by the end of the year if we're, you know, gonna withdraw from the grant.
Okay, so still back to November first, Honor of?
November first, yeah.
That we need to come back to this discussion as to how to move forward?
And then she said too, she said this could affect open space also, she told me. And that's all she said.
Well, it, it delays the timing of that, sure, but it, I mean, work's done.
So I think we should come back to the.
What is this created for?
This is for, it's playground equipment.
Replaces ADA?
ADA, so we, I think we should probably come back, probably November first, and see how things are going then.
But that won't leave us a lot of time to put something on the schedule. It feels like we ought to put it on the schedule and then cancel it if we can't execute it, right?
Mike, what, the town clerk is here, Mike.
You've got fourteen days when you have to reopen the warrant. If you were to open, close the warrant after November first with a special town meeting, you've got fourteen days, so if you're to open and close it on November first, you could have your town meeting on November fifteenth or sixteen.
Yep, we all need to do that.
Or you have it later, you know, but then you're really pushing up the time to get the tax rate established, you know, tax bills have to be put out and done, so you're already looking at a real tight spot. But I would just urge a selectman to approach this with caution considering the fact that we have such a minimal amount of what appears to be in stabilization. To go forward with a town meeting and take this money, even though you could rescind the vote, I mean, you're, you're leaving yourself with, you know, a little over a hundred thousand dollars in stabilization on paper, I mean, is this, is this project so important that you're willing to take that risk? I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a risk, even though you have the option to rescind, and I'd just be, I'd just be cautious, I would suggest.
So come back November first and decide what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Laurie. Okay, so we want to move on?
Yes.
To our next one, okay. Our next one is, let me get this out of the way. Our next one is to sign a PVPC housing rehab grant.
Motion to sign.
Second.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
I think it was only my, yeah, my signature. And then we had Kenny Cleveland signed it today, because he had assigned it also. So that's all done. That can be mailed out. And now, okay, now we have the WGL is the, their affiliate assignment request for a release. They would like to sell some of our sole interest in this consent form. I don't know if like.
Sole interest, do you remember this came up several months ago?
Right.
And you were cautious to sign it, so we vetted it.
With town council?
Yeah, with town council.
And there was one already signed, but now the second one just needs to be signed. It doesn't really say it has to be by all three, but since two already signed on one.
Yeah, we, yeah, two of us sign it, probably all three of us should sign it.
Right. One is already signed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this one's already been signed.
But Beth didn't.
By two of us.
Beth didn't sign any of them.
All right, so motions to sign the additional documents.
I'll second that, just Beth has to be there.
I stole somebody's pen. That's yours?
No, I have mine.
Hmm, nice pen.
Some pens just appear magically through.
Next one on the agenda is appointments. We have, we needed an alternate member to the zoning board of appeals, and so we had a request from Maureen, Maureen Morano. She would like to be the alternate, so I would like to, a motion.
Motion to appoint.
To appoint Maureen. I'm in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have another one from the historical commission. We had a letter from Joseph Laviera Senior, and he would like to be appointed to the historical commission.
Motion to approve.
I'm in favor?
Second.
And I sent an email for the, for the bylaw committee because I talked to two people on the personnel board who said that they knew the bylaw committee has to be imposed because they're going to have to use this.
Yeah.
Good.
So we have, I remember last time, Beth, we hadn't, we hadn't appointed any of the bylaw people, and you said that you wanted to see the charge for the bylaw committee. And, and have you seen it?
I have not.
Okay.
I sent that back in June, right after you asked for it, I emailed it over. And I just sent a recent email, like I said, last week stating that I was going to put it on the agenda to appoint the same people to the bylaw committee because they had agreed to be on it. Again, to people from the personnel board so that they thought it was important that one's in place because.
Yeah, because if we're gonna be doing our, you know, we need, we need to have the person, we need to have them.
Understood, I just want to ensure that we send a copy of this to the bylaw committee, because what we haven't gotten in the past from them, other than an up-down vote, is what's in this charge, which is a clear analysis of what the pros and cons are. They just basically say, we like it, we don't like it, so sad, too bad. And I really would prefer a much more comprehensive communication of what the benefits or costs to the community would be of those changes.
So.
All right, so.
Motion to appoint.
Motion to appoint, and I'm gonna ask motion to appoint them all at one time.
Yep.
We have James Cook, we have Barbara Wilson, we have Tara Brown, and Robert Bonds, and then we have Harry Pearson. And I'd like a motion to appoint these, these people to be, I'm in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if you wanna sign this? All right, our next one is to set meeting dates.
Yes.
Okay, now, in order to keep up like with our warrants with Laurie, I don't think we'll be having another warrant until the fifteenth, isn't that what you said, Karen?
You have, let me see, what's, what's, let me look at it.
Today is the first.
Oh, no, it will be next week. So instead, if you don't want to meet next week, you'll have to skip two weeks. You either have to meet next week or skip two weeks.
So we want to, do we want to meet next week, or do we want to meet on the fifteenth and then the twentieth?
You'd have to meet on the twenty-second. It's gonna be next week, and then it's gonna be the twenty-second. That's how it works, you have to stick with it.
And then I'm noticing here, November first is on a Friday, so.
What's the November?
November fifth would be the.
So would that Tuesday before November first, would we know where we stand on the financial reconciliation?
On the twenty.
Before November?
Say the twenty. The twenty, yeah, that, yeah, so that would be the twenty-ninth.
So let's meet on the twenty-ninth?
Okay, so we want to meet on the fifteenth, the twenty-ninth, and the twelfth of November, and the twenty-sixth. I won't be here on the twelfth.
Twenty-sixth, is that?
Twenty-sixth is Thanksgiving.
We've got it, sorry.
Oh, that's Thanksgiving week.
So we don't want to do that?
We don't want to do that, so.
So let's plan, just in case, depending on where we're standing with our financial stuff, why don't we do the first and the?
The first and the third?
First and third weeks, yeah. So it would be two weeks of back-to-back meeting.
Okay, so it would be the fifth, we'll meet, we'll meet the fifth.
Okay, so you're saying?
And the nineteenth, hmm?
What is?
In November.
Fifth and the nineteenth.
The fifth and the nineteenth. And then into December, probably going to the third, September third, and the seventeenth.
And then that way, to avoid the holidays.
We'll avoid the holidays, so that's all good for everybody.
Fifteen and twenty-nine for October, okay, got it, thank you.
Now we have some special use permits. We have quite a few from here.
Why don't we take them as a bundle, because they're all fishing, right?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
So a motion to approve all fishing permit requests.
I'll second that motion.
And then you can just sign away.
You didn't say eleven-twelve, right? Eleven-twelve is off the table now?
Yes, eleven-five.
We have ten fifteen, ten twenty-nine, eleven-five, and eleven-nineteen.
Yeah, right. Okay, we have one from, this is for the Brookfield Lions Club, and this is for, when is he, when's he doing this, Karen? Has he got the date on here?
That is an oddball one because he didn't do it online, but it's, it said, it has the date at the top. We're just gonna, if you approve that.
This is for twenty, yeah, it's for twenty, yeah, one twenty-five, twenty.
I'll go in and do it online.
No, that's for the ice fishing derby. And then we have another one for four nineteen, twenty-twenty, Iquavog Pond, for the Ripper's Bass Club. Is that the same one? No, and this is another one, and this is, oh no, that's it, his. Nope, and this is another one, and this is, oh no, that's his address.
Yeah, one.
That's all I want. Now we have another one for five-seventeen-twenty on Quaybog Pond for the Bass Anglers. Another one, five-thirty-twenty at Quaybog Pond for the South Middlesex Bass Anglers. And then, five-thirty-one-twenty-twenty on Quaybog Pond for the Northeast Bass Anglers. And then we have six-twenty-twenty on Quaybog for the Mass Bass Nation.
There's one that was only due to your...
Oh, another one was on...
Avid Anglers.
Six, uh, six-six-twenty for the Avid Anglers. Six-twenty-seven-twenty-twenty on Quaybog for the Tri-County Bass Masters. Seven-eighteen-twenty-twenty on Quaybog Pond for the Aluminum Boat Fishing Series.
What happened is, because there's so many, because they just put the application up on the first today, so...
Seven-twenty-six-twenty-twenty on Quaybog for American Bass Anglers D thirty-six. Eight-eight-twenty for Quaybog Pond for the Last Cast Anglers. Ten-ten-twenty on Quaybog for the Worcester Bass Master of Nibah.
Is this where our new policy of charging for the permits comes into place? Is that part of it or?
That policy hasn't moved.
That was for South Pond, it's not Quaybog.
Oh, no, this is a fishing derby. You don't, you don't get to charge anything for this. You just have...
And so, I would like, we have the motion.
We have the motion, we have a second?
A second, so, any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
No, that's swimming, and that's another day for another time.
Okay. All right, here. Are we going to bring this up tonight?
No.
No, okay. Now, our next one, special, okay, and under other, I'll bring up a little bit. When we met a couple of weeks ago, we discussed, you know, a lot of different things that was going on, and one of the things that I had brought up was that I didn't like, um, the fact that, you know, all different departments were collecting money from everybody, for everyone. So Laurie had brought up that maybe we should have a town collector. And Brenda said that she would be willing to be the town collector.
Okay, so just take a step back.
Well, no, a lot of times, when Brenda's not here...
Okay.
They'll leave the money, say for an example, with Mike, they might have, with Al, and I just think it passes, and this is something that we tried to stop back in FY fourteen, the money being collected by all these different people. And so Brenda said that she would, uh, she would be willing to be the, um, the town collector. And what it was, if DeeDee was up in Paxton, I guess what she would do, she could collect like water or anything that came in, and she would just have to keep these in, on a separate turnover sheet, and then she would turn these over to the treasurer. Is that right? That's how she would do it. And then she said she would even, if people aren't here, I, I mean, if she's not here and she's going to put her box on the outside, she said they could put all of those payments in the box also. So I talked to Mike about it, and Mike said that he would go and see what the procedure is to make her a town, uh, town collector, if it's in agreement with the two of you.
And let's get the agreement figured out.
Yeah, and, and let's just sort out whether or not that's going to require a bylaw change or if it's something that can just be followed under policy.
Well, we would have, I know we would have to have a job, we have to have a job description for a, for a town collector.
Right, and, and the way, and, and I think the challenge we would run into, and Mary Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still at a point where all job dis, all, even though she's currently employed as the tax collector, in the event that in the future those jobs were split, would that have to be in our personnel bylaw and have a collector instead of the tax collector?
No, but it would have to be a change in the job description.
Oh, yeah, that's what I just said.
Change in the grade.
Yeah, change in the grade, because most of your, Laurie had said most of your communities are town collectors. They're not actually just a plain...
Now, that's an elected position.
What?
Yeah, I think that the challenge that we have is where it's an elected position and, and the current definition, I think it's going to, I think it's going to be a little bit more complicated than us just...
Well, maybe we should make...
Perhaps that would be something to look into as well as the bonding. Um, I don't know what she's bonded from.
Yeah, we would have to look into that.
Certainly is something you want to check into, and, and that possibly would change it from an elected position to an appointed position.
It was, it was appointed at one time, and then, um, the, the tax collector that we had at the time, she didn't like the idea that it was an appointment. So they had got a special permission to put on, it was a petition onto special, uh, meeting, and they agreed to go back to being an elected position instead of an appointed position. But I feel it should be an appointed position.
So let's circle back, let's get the job description, circle back to the discussion.
So I brought, I did bring it up, um, just because Brenda's collecting the pad fees.
Oh, yeah, that's something else, too.
And they are not taxes.
Oh, that's right.
So, and she was completely unaware, the Board of Health was unaware, but because they're not committed as a tax collector, technically she cannot collect them.
Got it.
The Board of Health should be collecting them, and both departments were completely unaware. But she has been collecting them. They said in most towns, the way to avoid this is you have a town collector rather than a tax collector.
So the question is, is that going in the procedure as well?
Yes, it will.
Thank you very much.
It's a change in her position, it is. The Board of Health is going to collect their own money.
Yes, and they have to do their billing, too.
I'm loving it.
They do their own billing.
They do the billing.
They do do their own billing, which is how I caught on that they are not taxes.
And, but in all the years that I was here, I remember that it had been, um, the, the tax collector that took the money because she would always make me a copy of all the residents, so I knew who was up in the mobile home parks when I was town clerk. And so Brenda said she would be willing to be a town clerk. Mary Lou?
My question, and I missed part of that, was, has the water department consulted because they act as a quasi-independent entity?
They could, um, they completely collect their own money and turn it over themselves now, and realistically, if she was to do something like this, it would just be a backup for the owners.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, that's what it is.
It would make it more legal for her to accept the payment.
Yeah, yes.
Which happens because of the part-time nature of Holly, there's frequently times when she's not in here that, that people want to pay their bill.
And I just feel it's a better position to, so that, you know, you're not leaving money with the assessor, you're not leaving your money here and there, it's being left with one person. Peter?
So, are we proposing that, that a warrant article would be replaced, making a town collector changing the tax collector to an appointed position?
That's where the discussion's going.
Yeah, that's where it's going, and so we're going to have Mike check into all that.
Good.
And I'm going to, I'll check into, both of us will check into.
The policy document is getting better every day.
I have a pretty thick one on my other notes. There's this, there's this rabbit pen. It's going to thicken up quite a bit.
Works for me.
And what else did we bring up?
It's government, if it doesn't weigh, outweigh, it's another thing.
Now, was there anything else really that we, we brought up back at the meeting?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. That was basically Laurie explained, same thing that she had explained tonight, and then we talked about the town collector. And then, and the pad fees. That's basically what we talked about at our financial committee meeting.
Yeah.
So, if, uh, we're on, under other, just, I had one quick one. Back to the campground.
Okay, sure.
On October fifteenth, we're going to be visited by the attorney general's abandoned housing, um, people, and Kathy and I will be taking them down to the campground because they may, in fact, come up with funds to remove the last building.
Okay. DeeDee, did you want to bring up anything from the treasurer's office?
No, I think the treasurer's offices, we're moving daily forward.
Okay.
Laurie has been wonderful to work with, and we're, we're getting there. It's just, you know...
It's taking time.
It's a time-consuming effort.
Well, we've been off balance sheet for a while.
Just, just a little while.
Was it incorporated when?
Sixteen-seventy-three.
Seventeen-seventeen, first town meeting.
Yeah, but we were incorporated, though, in sixteen-seventy-three.
Oh, yeah. First town meeting, seventeen-seventeen. We were both right.
Okay, so we'll move on here to correspondence. We have something here from Mass Dot. It's a review of attached report notes, and it says, please note the deficiency highlighted for your immediate attention. There was nothing wrong with the Quaybog Street, Dunbrook Bridge, that was fine because we just did the work. But the South Pond Road, South Pond Inlet, they had all kind of pitches and things that they took that needed to be worked on.
Copy that aboard the highway.
So copy that aboard the highway if you just wanted to go on. They just showed some of the things that were needed on that, the bridge over there with South Pond.
All right.
I hope, I hope Quaybog Street's fine.
I hope so, too. That was a...
Were you affected ever by that when, was you living in Charlton? On the Quaybog Street Bridge, when you come down by the clam box? No.
It was out for a while.
It was out for a while.
Let's go to Charlton.
Okay, our next one is from Charter. October fifteenth, um, the Fox College Sports will cease transmission on SPP Tier Second. And then on October thirty-first, the Disney Family Movies on Demand will cease transmission on Spectrum Channel two-six-seven. And October nineteenth, ESPN Classic located on SPP Tier Two and Sports Pass will be no longer available. And that's all that we have for correspondence. And so I'd like, if there is nothing else, I would like to make a motion to adjourn at seven-thirty-one.
You have a second.
All in favor?
All right.
That's good. And thank you, everyone, for attending, and their input.